Morning, everyone. We're gonna start with the flag of allegiance. I'll have Commissioner Foyle start us off.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to the April 6, 2023 Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting. Start with the attendance in the morning. You have Chuck Person, you have Leila, you have Allison, Commissioner Foyle, yourself. On Zoom, we have Sheriff's Office, we have the sheriff, Captain Mann, Major Bashaw. We have George Gates, we have Jason, oh, Jason Henry. Okay, and we have Jason Smith. And we, who else?
Yeah, everybody.
Robin. Okay, I think I got everybody. So we're gonna do, we're gonna start with the RFP openings. Back about, when the opening is?
We've authorized the senior director of long-term care services to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Structural analysis saddleback in more than two hours.
I move to authorize the high chair to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to consent agenda.
I move to table the March 30, 2023, public and non-public meeting minutes, and further approve the March 23, 2023, non-public and grievance hearing meeting.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. On the motion, or is there any discussion? Motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Surplus equipment requests pursuant to NH, Hampshire RSA 28A-AIT office.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to Hampshire RSA 28A-A, and declare a list of computer equipment for the IT manager surplus with the items to be discarded.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
It's like everything for me.
I know. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. On to accounts payable.
I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes an accounts payable list total of $3,194,804.27.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu? I haven't seen this list, $3 million. We have a brief list, there is a summary.
Yeah.
See my packet?
I can say that about 1.7 is the monthly state bills. So every other AP run, we're gonna have this about 1.7 million for our 1/12 of the cap that the state assesses us on an annual basis. Then we do have two runs that were for rental assistance that are in there that are over $200,000. We've got over $200,000. Every AP run is about that much or more for contracted nursing agency staffing and some other various privacy department awards. And there's one month to of medical claims, I believe, for February as far as general ledger for expenses.
Any further questions? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
All right, so on to liaison updates.
Okay. Kathy Stacy, Registry Digs couldn't make the meeting today because she's in Concord fighting for cost beneficial nursing home at a cap. Turning back, Conway is also in court, so she's not able to join us. I had conversations with some members of the delegation this week. One in particular was from Representative Bose, who made, he emailed me and told me that he thought that the cost for the solar farm was very expensive and wanted to see bids. So I went on a task to find a bid for the solar farm, and I didn't find any bids here, but we did not bid the job out. And that we do not have any comparative pricing on this particular project. So I know it's under the management of Harvey, and I'd like to suggest that we ask Harvey to check the prices, bid it out. I'm not looking to replace revision, but I want to make sure that we're getting the right deal because I don't see any, no bidding for anything. We just awarded this, or maybe somebody can explain to me how we make an award like that without a financial comparison. So we don't have to have that discussion right now. I know we have a very busy day.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a question I have on the table because I can't answer. He requested a copy of the bids, and I'm not sure how to answer because I don't have any.
We are, I mean, just to back up, the reason there's no bids is because this is not contract. This is the contact with Harvey, right? So we're not going to, you know, similarly, we don't, you know, Harvey with HVAC, we're not looking at everything. This is a, you know, a decision with, that Harvey made, not us. Now, stepping back, you know, I can tell you that the food builders work with in this area when it comes to solar is Revision. They are really one of the few, if only, you know, companies that are doing so big municipal solar farms. So there's that aspect. And then there's the aspect of, you know, it being a local business that creates tax revenue, employment opportunity, and, you know, is obviously in our community. So anyway, we, you know, we can have further discussions about it, but that I think, I suspect those are some of the reasons that Harvey selected. Okay.
I'd just like to correct one thing. Harvey selected, Harvey did not really select Revision. Harvey was told by this body to use Revision. And I don't have a problem with it. Don't misunderstand, but not the only people on the market to do this. Harvey's bidding out every other aspect, the HVAC and everything else that's involved in there. It just would seem to me that we should be checking the price to make sure that we're not getting, you know, that we're getting a fair shot. Harvey should be doing that. I agree. It's under Harvey's contract, but Harvey should be ensuring for us and for the taxpayers that we're getting the right bang for the buck. But that's, we can discuss it later, but.
We can discuss it later, but I'm just gonna put my two cents in. You know, originally, when we had the offer money, we put it aside. That, the number that we have is really a placeholder. We don't know what that final number's gonna be, so it's hard numbers. So.
I wouldn't do it.
No, we don't.
Harvey and Revision from South Portland Maine, by the way, that's where they're revisions. They have a satellite sales office here, by the way, they don't do anything. Well, maybe they do some other, I don't know what work they do, but the contract is between Revision of South Portland Maine and Harvey Construction. That's who the contract is by between, the rest of the contract. And.
There's so much to be, I mean, they're not operating business, so I mean, that's.
Yeah, so let me finish what I'm saying. I understand there's a contract between Harvey and Revision.
With money.
That's right, but we're gonna, but they're looking at all that stuff.
No, they're not.
And it could go down.
Wow, okay.
We don't know until we have the final numbers. That's how I view Revision, or that's how I know it. Now, originally, we were gonna do our own.
Correct.
Do it that way. And we did ask for some numbers from Revision and whatnot. But then we realized, once we realized the complexity of putting this together with the building, it made more sense to put it under Harvey. And just like Commissioner Foyle had mentioned, I'm not going out to bid for doors and windows and lumber, and I'm not doing that.
Harvey is.
Harvey is. That's their job.
Well, I just wanted to do it on this too.
We have a contract already. So if we don't wanna get, I mean, you're going down a slippery road of putting us at liability to get sued. So they have established a contract. You don't have to like the process that took place, but we established a contract looking at, we had, you know, looking at all the factors. We had Revision come, they presented before the delegation. The delegation is aware of this already. And so now, like, to the extent that we're trying to rewrite history, that puts us at risk for liability, so.
All right, so we can have further discussion. We'll bring it back. Anything else?
Well, I had another discussion with a member of the delegation, Deb Hobson, who had questions about how we handle opioid access. What do we do with these folks? And her concern is that she's got a family member who has a problem and is like just experiencing the difficulty of somebody who has a serious issue. And she's looking for us to try to be creative and how do we help these folks? We've got opioid money, and that was just a comment that she's, you know, passionate about and looking to see if she can get some advice from us.
So also, she's a state rep, right?
She's part of our delegation, yes.
Being a state rep, she also knows that there's majority of the opioid money in the state. So I'm assuming that if she's concerned with the county's doing, she should also be concerned with the state's.
The 85%.
Because she's there and she can make a difference there. But I would have her, I would have her reach out to.
I mean, community corrections. I mean, one of the big things about this new project is to have community corrections, which is real opioid treatment with a 90-day residential treatment program for people with addiction.
This is not people, for people who are incarcerated, this is for people that have.
Well, I mean.
Oh, can they?
No, it's people who get sent, you have to get sent.
Right, okay.
So, but the reality is, and where is the instance where you have someone who has a severe addiction who is in court and, unfortunately? I mean, there's a lot of overlap because addiction is costly. I mean, it's costly on a person, it's financially costly to get the drug. So what you see is, unfortunately, that's other, and, you know, other crime as it relates to. So there is a lot, and that's why we have drug court and all sorts of programming. But, I mean, I think to Commissioner Chiricello's point, if we're expecting the opioid evasion money, 85% is being kept on the state. So we're gonna do our best, and, you know, we were the leaders, you know, Rockingham County was one of the leaders in the jail for medical, for MAT, for MAT program. So, I mean, I could cite numerous ways that we're really working hard to address these issues.
Or she's not complaining.
Yeah.
No, no, she just wants to know.
Yeah.
I'll connect her with Jason Henry.
Yeah.
She is so involved.
Yeah, and by the way, I believe this 90-day program is like the second one in the state. Give me a thumbs up.
There's a couple out there that have 90-day programs. We'll be one of the ones to have, we have our own building for it, though.
Similarly, this is why we have the opioid committee, you know, our committee, right? So that we can, we haven't made any decisions, we can think about more, we can have a strategic approach to use as a fund.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner Foyle?
I'm gonna be brief, there's a lot going on. I know, shocking. So the jail population is at 149, they are COVID-free, and I think the theme again this week is budget, budget, budget. So they've been working on budget, they've been working on some staffing issues. Over at long-term care, community transmission is at medium level. Significantly, for the first time in three years, residents no longer have to mask. So, so nice. You can see people's smiling faces, and what a difference because it's always a good reminder that, you know, this is the resident's home. And, you know, we all feel like, you know, in the height of the pandemic, when you go home, you wanna unmask. And they have not been able to unmask in their home. So this is a really, really significant thing and something worth watching. But it's also no COVID at the time, and.
What? Zero in zero in the jails, zero in health?
Yeah. It's a good week. Chuck, finance. I don't know if you slept in the last two weeks or week, or ever. But obviously, budget, budget, budget. I, you know, I, having reviewed the budget, and I know it's like it takes a village. I think everybody's worked really hard to produce tight budgets. And I know, just as one commissioner, I appreciate everyone's efforts. I really do. And I know, you know, Chuck, you spearhead a lot of, in terms of some of the plugging and creating these budgets for us. So thank you for all your work. Thank you to everybody, all the contributors in finance and all the department heads, and not just department heads, but everybody in your departments who helped create this and worked hard to keep it tight. We have, so that's, you know, Chuck's also busy with grants, fee of money coming in. Where do you wanna go? And so we have a fun, long fun day ahead together. Thanks.
I'm gonna be very brief, too. I went up to Concord, it was the Monday, Tuesday. Just to speak on behalf of HB 284, as you recall, that's the bill that we, Rockingham County started to increase the amount of not, you know, being able to spend without going out to bid from $5,000, which was established in 1998, to $10,000, it just made more sense. All the other counties agreed, wanted to get in on that as well because it's just, each time you do out, you know, put out a bid, it costs money. So that went pretty smooth. I was just, very brief, I explained to them, you know, they were looking forward to it, and I think it's gonna pass no problem. They had no major questions, so I'm assuming that come on the new budget, we'll be able to take care of that. That's all I have, so. Let's go on to long-term care services, land free healthcare.
I move to approve the land free healthcare agreement extension and authorize the chair to find all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Polaris, Boxer.
I move to approve the Polaris Group mock survey contract and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? If not.
Jason, you just added the indemnification clause most significantly.
Correct. We followed the same language that we presently have already with Polaris Group that services our accounting department here, billing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. I vote yes. Homeland Security Search and Rescue Grant application.
I move to approve the Homeland Security Search and Rescue Equipment Grant application in the amount of $9,091.34 and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the high chair.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Commissioner Foyle?
Yes, I was just, you're, I was, hold on one second, I just have to get the right name. So you're basically looking to get some equipment that, a piece of equipment for radio. Is that fair?
No.
No, this is another one of those grants that we technically get awarded it before we've been applied for belonging to the NHTO A. So the piece of equipment we're looking at is a long-range acoustical device. It's used for crowd management dispersion, and we also use it. It's used for trainings when we do like active shooter scenarios in schools. It's used to project sound throughout the building to simulate kind of chaos and unrest as the trainings are happening. But yeah, it's used during crowd control, large events where you need to be able to communicate effectively with crowds.
Yeah, sorry, I read the long-range communication, I wasn't sure exactly.
Yep.
I see. It's like, yeah.
Any other further questions? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Contracted Prosecution Services proposal rejection and new RFP.
I move to reject the proposals received for the contracted prosecution services RFP and authorize the publishing of the RFP as recommended by the high chair.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on that motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Change order request.
I move to approve a change order request for Abbott's Industries Corporation for an amount not to exceed $4,987, bringing the total for this vendor to $41,604.72 as recommended by the high chair.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. All right, we're on to department head updates. I'm gonna start a little bit different, I'm gonna go with Allison first.
Oh, my goodness. Hi, it's been budget because we've been doing the regrades wage analysis for the departments and completing the forms and getting those prepared. And negotiations with engineering maintenance. We are kind of down to maybe one outstanding item. We've worked our way through that. I'm still waiting for Steve Arnold to connect back in with me on the information that I sent over to him, but it's just been super busy. We've had a lot of stuff going on in HR that is in conjunction with the payroll finance office. So thank you.
Yeah, I just, I wanna take an opportunity, I should have done it on the liaison. I wanna take an opportunity to thank Chuck and Allison and you for that negotiations for the last couple of weeks. There was some trying times, but we managed to get through it. I think everyone's gonna be happy, so. All right, let's move on to Chuck and Allison.
As been mentioned, you know, budgets, grants, many other, you know, payroll negotiations, just overall busy. Thank you.
Wow. Hi, Chuck.
Good job, Chuck.
That's a record.
That's your best league department head update.
Jason Smith, you're next.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll keep mine short and sweet as well. It was really nice that we were able to use the dedicated hospice suites for a family where a resident was moved to a private room and the family was able to spend quality time with them as they, in their life. So I just wanted to say thank you for allowing that to happen. Admissions, discharges, just so you're aware, last month, we admitted 17 residents. Nine of them were SNF, eight was long-term care, 15 discharges either due to hospice or other communities, group homes, assisted living, or back home. So just so you're aware of admissions. And we're just prepping for survey window that opens up in May. The two teams are out, and they're early, about six weeks. So I'm expecting them at the first part of our window. We have a seven-month window where they can come in at any point in time, any hour. So hopefully, we'll see them sooner than later. Thank you.
Yeah, Jason, I heard a rumor that they're in Hillsboro County.
Yes, they are.
They're close by.
They are.
All right, thank you. Jason Henry.
Good morning. A couple things, we had the media crew here this week working on filming the recruitment video, and I'd thank HR and Autumn, they were here all day as well. So that seemed to go well, I'm looking forward to the final product. Another good note, as of today, we are lifting masks from the officers and the inmates. Again, with some caveats today, we have outbreaks, we'll go back to where we were, and we'll still be screening everybody in the way in and that kind of stuff. So we're heading on a pass staff, pretty happy. So the inmates, last thing I have here is the ACLU reached out to me. In 2021, I testified against a bill where the hospitals were trying to push through a warrantless arrest article for if anybody assaulted a medical person, they could be arrested even if it wasn't in the presence of an officer. The end result of that is it means more intakes to us and those that are in critical incidents. I got squashed, but brought up again this year in Senate Bill 58, something similar. So we have a conversation with them to probably testify again against this bill. That's all I have.
I mean, that bill, Jason, how, like, they're making a carve-out for, in hospitals, but isn't that like a parade of, you know, it's opening a Pandora's box for all these carve-outs?
It does. I mean, you have a carve-out already for domestic violence, which I do understand warrantless arrest. But they want this now for the hospitals. Again, hospitals pushing all these people out. Last time I testified, they said, well, we won't do people that are in IEAs in crisis. And I testified, I have two people in my, at that time, right down in my booking area, that were under IEAs that had assaulted somebody at the hospital. So they flat out were, I won't say lied, but they definitely would put people that were in crisis, send them to jail rather than when they were getting the treatment help they needed because I can't do four-point restraints and I cannot do forced medication here. I can't do things that the hospitals can do, and I want to push them off, these people that actually need higher level of care than the jail can manage.
Exactly. I mean, I think fundamentally, that's what it is. It's like IEA, people should be at the hospital fundamentally are gonna end up, more of them are gonna end up at the jail. And that's like the most, and some of the most, with the most mental acuity, right? The most meetings. Anyway, thank you for testifying.
All right, thanks, Jason. I'm gonna go to June Gates.
Good morning. I'll be very brief today as well, looking forward to the budget reviews today. All's well, we're really busy. It's not just budget, we're busy with everything, changing the seasons, there's a lot of stuff going on. HVAC-wise, the healthcare clinician's office is complete. The guys, I think, helped to assemble furniture and et cetera yesterday. Allison's and Rob and I are wrapping up the IT needs for the clinician, and the room came out really nice, actually, it's quite beautiful. Other than that, fielding some vendor inquiries. Now that the building project is out on the street, there's just some clarifications, little questions coming in. Kevin Walsh was really helpful with some questions about the antenna that they're gonna need for dispatch and et cetera. Thank you very much. Can't hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yep, I think so. I can't hear. I'm so sorry, I can't hear you.
I think it takes a minute for the owl to recover.
After somebody else has been talking, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you hear us now?
Yep.
There you go.
All right, next up is the sheriff, sheriff of sales.
Yeah.
Good morning, I'm gonna keep it short, looking forward to meet you on our budget review, and nothing new to report.
Thank you very much. Robin, Bernie.
Good morning, I'm not gonna say the B-word. All is well in IT, and we'll see you this afternoon.
Okay. All right, I think, lastly, Leila, what do you have? Any information you want to share with anybody?
Can't even think of anything, my mind's still spinning, so. Just been busy.
Been very busy, yeah. All right, I think that's it for the department head updates. We're gonna go to new business. Now, is Gallagher coming personally, or?
I believe they are.
Okay, so they're not here yet, so I'm gonna ask if there's any other new business. Commissioner Godu?
Yes, I just wanna clarify my position on spending money to stay in a hotel room within Rockingham County. I don't approve of it. I don't know that you need my approval, but just wanna state the position. I don't think that we should be spending money for hotel rooms that are in Portsmouth.
Very good, thank you very much. Any other new business? No? Okay. Any old business? I think we're all set there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if there's any public comment? I don't think there's anybody from the public here, so. Nothing, right? Okay, so no one from the public. All right, so now we're just waiting for Gallagher.
So I think Gallagher's scheduled at 9:30. So I suggest that we move into non-public right now, and then we can come out of non-public for 9:25. Do you want to make an announcement about if we're ready ahead of time in terms of?
Yeah. Yeah, well, first off, if anyone wants to watch the Gallagher report, because we're gonna go into non-public a little bit because Gallagher's not here. If you want to, raise your hand if you want to actually view everything on Gallagher, and we can actually text you and get you back into the meeting.
Or you can plan to just log back into Zoom at 9:30.
Yeah.
For those who want to participate.
So with that, Commissioner Foyle has an announcement to make.
Okay, so just because, so we have, everybody's scheduled for their 30-minute slot for, to review the budget. We just asked for some flexibility, we can text or reach out just in the event that things move faster or slower, there might be some slight modifications. But, and if anybody has any, like, script they're not available for, just let us know. But I, I mean, my sense is that everybody is very cooperative, and we can all figure out like timing to get everybody. Very cooperative and we can all figure out like timing to get everybody in, so, and we appreciate that. We can get through this stuff, so, thank you.
All right, everybody, we're gonna go into non-public, so if you want to sign off, you can sign off. If you want to come back later, you can. Thank you.
I moved to enter into non-public person to ninety-one A colon three, section two personnel and invite. Um, Allison and Jason.
Motion for the second, second, and all motions favor say I.
Sorry, Chuck.
Sounds like I get better than you.
Well, we have, you know, we could get through some of these things prior to.
Right, right, so we have everybody here that needs to be in here?
Um, we had two non-publics. With respect to the four, first non-public, I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely. Because they, they impact the, they affect the reputation of a individual. With respect to the second non-public, I moved to seal those minutes until July first, twenty twenty-three. Because a um, decision now, it could impact a uh, final decision.
Second, and um, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Uh, Commissioner, just the note, Commissioner, you do step out temporarily, so. So that, that's.
Okay.
And now we're back in public and do you want to say we're hosting Gallagher?
Yes, okay. Never mind.
There's some, um, on the other side, there's some fruit, some breakfast stuff, anything if there.
I go to my favorite place down the road here, Ryan, Ryan's place.
Yeah.
I go there every time I'm up here.
Do me a favor, will you?
Yes.
Just say, don't let it be written, don't let it be done.
I get that a lot, you know. I get it, you, no, you're not good. So I'm out of, uh, I live in Plymouth, Massachusetts, but our offices are in Boston, Seaport, or we have one in Quincy, too. Um, too many offices, by the way. Uh, but it's funny, I, I get that a lot and um, before my father passed away. They were, uh, my mother and father were here for Easter and I dressed up as the Pharaoh. It, it, oh, it was hilarious.
It's gas, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And Brian.
Yeah.
He's a good-looking one.
So, Jonathan, I just want to introduce you to the, our new, newest commissioner.
Okay.
Uh, this is Commissioner Goddard.
How are you? Gary, nice to meet you too.
Gary and Brian, we're on Gallagher.
Yeah, no, I'm good. No, I'm good, yeah. Here to observe. Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Julie.
Okay, that's joining us.
Yeah, I texted Pat and let her know that we were done.
Well, you're gonna share it with them so they see it, or?
Yeah, I think most of us also have it. Yeah, we've seen it and we have it.
Okay, all right, that's fine, so, good, 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 that's perfect.
Thank you, we are. At least with, you know, it's nice, you can expand some of the.
Yeah, some of the wording gets, yeah, that's why I got the cheaters here.
So I have two files. Which one is first?
So, the um, the Excel workbook is everything rolled up. We're gonna be doing the PowerPoint, which is kind of the executive summary. Yeah, we just, we send you the entire workbook, just backup on, you know, in case you.
This is the whole.
From the agenda.
It's towards.
I'm gonna bring it up.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't mind.
I have to have paper in front of me.
I'm kind of the same way.
Yeah.
There's some aspects, yeah.
Even in my real estate world, even though I do a lot on computer, I have to have a back, paperback.
I like to write on things, too.
He's gonna put it up on the page for me.
So, I'm just watching along.
Yeah, whatever you guys are ready.
All right, sounds good. Well, nice seeing everybody. Um, and uh.
You know everybody, right?
We, we, we do, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I guess first of all, you, we can take you right through this presentation, the executive summary, uh, PowerPoint. Uh, but I didn't know if you had any specific questions that you wanted to kind of address first, or let me go through it and.
If not, we'll just, we'll look at the presentation and we'll ask questions as they come along.
Sounds good. Okay, uh, next slide is the agenda and it's pretty concise. We're gonna focus on uh, the twenty twenty-three uh, benefit plan programs. We'll go over the roll-up. And then we'll kind of delve into the specifics of the administration renewals. Uh, stop-loss renewal, which is probably the most important, and we want to kind of concentrate on the medical projections and then the same thing. We have some claim data also. Uh, and then we'll look at the dental plan and then some proposed or possible plan design changes to consider, okay? So this next slide is kind of busy, but uh, it's what we call the roll-up, so. It's broken down by fixed costs, which would be your administration, your stop-loss. Um, HSA administration, COVID administration, the like, disability, EAP, all of those things. So those are the knowns, that we know exactly what those amounts are going to be. And then the section underneath that would be the projected. Uh, variable cost, which would be your claims. You know, we don't know exactly what they're gonna be, but we have a pretty good understanding. Applying trend on what those figures will be, and then the bottom uh, columns um. Are basically what the difference would be from current and anticipated renewal costs, so. Uh, concentrating on the fixed cost, this one's pretty easy because almost everything is a uh, on a rate hold right now. So you'll see in the far right-hand columns, uh, dollar change and percentage change. Most of those are zeros, which are great. Um, the very one on the bottom, which is the P Corey, members that, that fluctuates basically by your counts. Uh, and it's a small dollar amount, a hundred and seven dollars. But the big line item here on the fix would be the stop-loss, okay? So that's coming in at a fifteen point nine percent renewal. Um, and a couple of slides later, I'm gonna get into more detail on that. And some options and some considerations for that, so.
Sorry.
No, no, go right ahead.
I mean, essentially, we just had a number of high, high claims this year. And when we look at projector, projections, it looks like there's not an end in sight, and so. Well, I mean, not, it's gonna be ongoing.
Yeah.
Not an end in sight, but it's gonna be ongoing, so in, in essence, we're up fifteen percent to account for these number six, whatever.
Exactly, and it was.
To get the big picture and.
And actually, it was a little bit higher. Uh, Brian did a nice job in negotiating with HM, um, using some. Levers that we really didn't have, but uh, we'll get into that in a little bit further.
No, isn't it true because of COVID, a lot of people didn't do anything, they just stayed there. So we're, we're looking at, the reason why it's spiking is, is because of.
Yeah, and, and when we. Exactly. When we get into the projection, we're going to show you how we account for that. Um, there's still a tail going on, so. Exactly what you're saying. People deferred care. They deferred some procedures because of COVID. Um, you know, not of their own will, obviously, but there was a repercussion. And we're seeing it across the board with all of our self-funded groups, you know, and fully insured. Mo- most of us are self-funded like you. Um, we're seeing a tail and there's some, some high-dollar claims in there and, I mean, the renewals have been. Somewhat ugly uh, in the last couple of years.
So, remember the quick question, would you feel like it will, it will actually, in following years, it'll, it'll level off?
It, it's starting to already, so uh, what you'll see when we go over the projection is our underwriters, we're using what we call a margin. So, you know, we, we keep things, all things being equal, we look at data, we look at trends. And they were putting a little fudge factor, what we call a margin. It was four percent a couple of years ago. When, when we really saw the impact of COVID. It's, it's reducing now to two, even one, depending on the group.
They put a larger fudge factor because they weren't sure how COVID was gonna play out, so essentially, they wanted to insulate themselves a little bit.
No question, because we can't put you in a bad spot.
Right.
You know what I mean? That's the worst thing that we can do is put you underfunded. So, they put that little fudge factor. You know, the other thing is, I mean, healthcare providers have raised costs, too. So, it's, you know, it's, it's a whole snowball effect. Uh, but this is pretty good as far as, like I said, the fixed cost looked pretty good. We'll, we'll get into more detail on the stop-loss. The variable cost, what we're, uh, we're saying is a ten point three percent increase in your medical claims. In a two point two, again, we'll get into more detail on that. So if we rolled everything up, uh, as is, no changes whatsoever. We're looking at about a nine point two total annual cost adjustment, okay? And we'll get in, as I said, in some more detail, so. Uh, the next slide gives you the breakdown, so this is Cigna's, uh, what we call ASO Administrative Services only. Their renewal is a zero percent increase, which is great. Uh, their rate guarantee is for thirty-six months, so this will expire on six thirty twenty twenty-four. So we don't have anything to worry about. Um, this also includes a twenty thousand dollar annual wellness fund, and you can see that we still have about seventeen thousand left. In the twenty twenty-two balance, so we'll spend those down. We'll see if maybe they'll roll over a little bit if we can't spend them down.
Well, last year, they, they rolled over the chunk last year because of COVID, but you kind of indicated they weren't so, so we're trying to spend it.
Yeah, or we're gonna also look at maybe some more creative ways to be able to spend it, so, open up the, so. Yeah, Brian and I will do. So here, uh, the next slide will be your HM uh, stop-loss renewal, and this is really where we want to focus the bulk of our time. Uh, along with the projection, so uh, you can see all the specific stop-loss, the aggregate stop-loss. The deductibles, the corridors, you know, all that stuff. These are all staying the same. Uh, you're basically on a paid claim, so you don't have to worry about any backlog of claims, uh, or something that didn't get included. So you're on basically a paid basis, which is good, it's the best you can have. Um, the critical thing is the deductible, which right now you're at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars stop-loss deductible. So you're responsible for all claims up to one fifty. Anything that goes over one fifty, you'll get reimbursed by the stop-loss carrier. There's also aggregate coverage uh, as well, which is a basically a hundred and twenty percent. Uh, what they say is, okay, we have a, we, we project what your total claims will be. And HM, the stop-loss carrier will say, well, if you have a horrendous year, something happens and, you know. Epidemic, you, you, you're just going crazy with claims. If you're at a hundred and twenty percent or over of the total. Anticipated uh, claims budget, then they reimburse you on the aggregate. It's very rare that this happens. It would have to be something very catastrophic. But it's, you know, it's, we call it sleep-at-night insurance, just in case. Um, so the renewal came in uh, at twenty-two percent, so that's the middle renewal there. And Brian did a nice job of, of uh, basically fa- uh, a fantasy leverage by. You know, talking about other carriers that we're looking at, possibly Cigna being aggressive with the stop-loss. And he was able to negotiate it down to uh, fifteen point nine, so, you know, that's, that's a nice uh, seven, thirty-five thousand dollars roughly. Savings from the renewal, so we've got them to lock this in at fifteen point nine percent. Um, which generally they don't do so early, but because you've been with them for a little bit, uh, they're a great partner of ours. And uh, they, they gave us the ability to lock this in now without seeing another month's claims. Um, coincidentally, we were just notified yesterday of a very large claim to hit.
That's what I told you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I told them about it about a week ago. I knew it was coming.
Yeah, it's independent, yeah, with a heart condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could possibly go to a transplant, so they gave us a heads up on this one. It's gonna be a big one.
That's why I wanted to lock in, yeah, tentatively, I told them to lock it in.
We did.
Right, before they got that claim.
Yeah, so we, we communicated with HM, uh, Brian said. You know, Rockingham is gonna stay with you. The only, the only possible adjustment might be on the specific stop-loss level. We'll confirm that today or tomorrow, so they allowed us to lock it in, which is great, and.
We would typical. Hmm, number, I mean, obviously, we've got up, but it's like, you know, this is the, like, how many claimants?
Yeah.
This is a numbers game.
It, it is, and so the next slide actually will kind of give you an idea of, you know, some options, so. Uh, again, on the far left, we've got the renewal column, so uh, revised, so that's the fifteen point nine at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Stop-loss level. They've given us options to increase that level to a hundred and seventy-five thousand or even two hundred thousand. So, you've been, uh, you've been at the same level, I believe, since two thousand and fourteen. Normally, we will look at maybe three years uh, to adjust the medical trend. So, we're saying, let's just say a twenty-five thousand dollar procedure today, three years down the road. You're gonna apply trend and that might look like a thirty-five thousand dollar claim for the same procedure. So normally, we look at adjusting that stop-loss level every three years or so. Uh, and again, it depends on where the renewal comes in. It depends on where you folks are trending, what we're seeing for claims coming in on the high-dollar level. Um, in this case, where it's a fifteen point nine percent, you know, which it sounds high, but it's, that's actually. Pretty much a trend renewal right now. We're seeing, we're seeing twenty, twenty-five, we're, we're seeing some big. Renewal numbers on the stop-loss side for just what we were talking about earlier. So, talking with Chuck, Allison, and Julie, you know, we're, we're kicking around and, you know, it's basically a situation where. Do you want to roll the dice, you know, and say, okay, we save on the fixed cost if we move the stop-loss level up? And how much of that savings is getting eaten up by?
Yeah, exactly. That's like, it just hurts on that, so if we're over four.
Exactly. And, and so what we do is, we look at the, the numbers and we say, okay, well, is this realistic? What are we really thinking about? You know, to, to bet on saving, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars. So, coming back, our recommendation is to leave it where it is and kind of save that bullet, if you will, for a bad renewal. So, you know, we already know that we've got a, a big number coming and, you know, if we just kind of look to the future. You're probably looking at a fairly sizable, at least a fifteen, sixteen percent next year.
On our renewal.
On your renewal, so, so save that. Save that bullet basically for next year.
Right.
Uh, and again, what we're looking at is, you know, you've got seven, currently you have seven claims that are approaching that number or, or over that number. So, our recommendation would be to leave it at one fifty for this year. You know, lock, you lock it in at that fifteen point nine percent, uh, and then, you know, hope that you have a better year next year. But at least it kind of gives you some wiggle room next year.
Right, where we have to go up on the.
Right.
Right, because rather than taking a thirty, you know, a thirty percent hit here, we're doing it fifteen and fifteen, which is what is.
And, and we have had a history here of jumping stop-loss carriers prior.
Yeah.
And we really, if we can get a stop-loss carrier that wants to keep us on a year or two or three.
Yeah.
That's a really good thing, because when they decide not to, we'll have had some history with that. And when we go out to look, those other carriers, when they come back, they might say, yeah, we'll want to take a chance.
Yeah, we, we don't, you know, Brian and I, we're talking about, you don't, you don't want to burn the carriers, you know? For instance, as soon as we get out of this meeting with you folks, we're gonna call HM and say, hey, you, you probably know already. But there's a high claim coming.
Yeah.
Um, by the way, good news is, you know, we're all set with, with Rockingham. Bad news is, you got a high claim. Now, they probably have a, an advance notice on that. So they'll get kind of tripped when it hits like fifty percent of that, that number, so they probably see this on the radar already. Um, the fact that Cigna called us yesterday to tell us about it, um, you know.
I told you.
Where you know, yeah. So the timing is, is, you know, difficult, if you will. But we're gonna call them right away and say, hey, you know, to give you a heads up on this, just to be fair, but. Anyway.
Is there any chance that they could come back and say, uh, now that we got this information where?
Yeah.
Yeah. Reneging on this offer?
It, it would be a rare thing for them to do, because they've given us the firm quote. Okay, with the understanding that we're not going out to market or anything like that, so, and again, that's so bad.
That's okay. Part of it, too, they're, they are, again, we started off at twenty-two percent, but they are getting fifteen, right? And the thing is, we can support an increase when it's needed, and that's what's needed, so they still are getting an increase, so. Really, I'm, I even seen in my, wow, these last ten years or so, where someone's reneging.
Yeah.
Usually what happens is they know about the claim, because you've got to do the right thing by letting them know, but then they'll hold at the fifteen percent, right? I think, uh, to Gary's point, though, depending on how it goes, and if there's a transfer, it's gonna balloon. And so next year's renewal, the stop-loss, you probably. Be double digits again. It would just be sitting here. Gary and I will probably look a little bit older, but it's the same kind of story.
I can't lose it anymore, yeah.
But you know, it could go well, right? And the center of excellence kind of steps in with a organ transplant, and then maybe things kind of come down a little bit. But um yeah, so I haven't, we haven't seen we neg.
No, and and they're they're one of our preferred carriers. So. Uh Gallagher places more stop loss than any other consultant firm in the country. So. We have preferred relationships with the the likes of Sun Life, HM, you know, so, because we play so much. So they would not. They wouldn't wanna burn a relationship with us either. So we we feel pretty good about that.
And I think Chuck and I, for a long time, have said, you know, you're always prepared. It's gonna come around at some point and hit us. I'm just hoping it's not gonna be as catastrophic as it might, it could be, because this could be our catastrophic dream.
Yeah, and you know, keep in mind, they also, they have catastrophic coverage on there. So they have reinsurance too, so.
So I think, I mean, from our perspective, are we all, I it seems very clear with respect to. The uh stop loss, we should go with your recommendation of the one. I mean, the number's just, it's four. That's what the, that tipping point is, so.
Agreed. Okay, so we can. That's great. So the next slide, actually.
I'll sleep better knowing it's done.
This kind of gives you, you know, notes and considerations. So some things that that I didn't say. Um usually Cygnus is kind of always looking to get in on the stop loss. Coverage here and and wants to quote, and you know, obviously we we'll always look at them. Um this year, they said, well, we're we're not gonna be competitive. We're at least twenty five percent right now. So we're not gonna offer a quote. So that kind of tells you a little bit about.
Yeah, I think they probably saw some claims flutter in the end and probably alluded to the heart and they just, because last year they were pretty competitive, right?
They were.
Um and so that kind of shows with the market, like HM's still being reasonable, right, and fair, but they are still getting increased to support the claims. Uh Allison actually says I'm very interested in that. In stop loss, it's a little unique where you try to be as loyal as you can, stick with a pattern for another year, so that they see the good years along with the bad.
Yeah.
It definitely pays off. And then generally, the end that mentions, I'm trying to be polite, right?
Yeah.
Um, you know, the thing with COVID, it's not only people have the pause button, right? So when we noticed too, people started getting back and starting doing like elective surgeries. There was a chunk of folks that. Didn't go to the doctors at all. And so something that was building inside or whatever, right, a condition. Kind of really festered. All of a sudden, you're gonna see the doctor, and you're like at stage three of whatever that condition is versus maybe catching it early. So, you know, I'm not saying that some of this is happening with the person in the heart, but there's definitely some. Now it's planning out, COVID's part of normal, you know, goes up there with the flu and everything else as far as another condition, but. There's definitely an element of folks that just, I'm not seeing the doctors in the air. And then that just delayed maybe detecting something a little bit early. So there's been a push on that. That's been the other bubble. I meant to. Try to chime in on that a little bit earlier, but yeah, good point.
Yeah. Uh so this kind of goes over what we were talking about earlier. The one uh thing that we did not discuss is this. Uh proposal includes a maximum fifty percent rate cap for twenty twenty four renewal. So. You know, it it's not unheard of these days to see to see a fifty percent rate increase. So let's just, it's it's kind of a nice thing, you know, hope. I'm assuming we're gonna get better than fifty percent next year, but you know, when the event that things went off the rail, you've got a guarantee. Uh but, you know, obviously, it's just a nice thing to have in place.
Fifty percent is about the best you can get. I actually had three groups.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it was a good thing it was in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause um they didn't even let me in the room to explain how bad the increase was. It was north of fifty, so it might look like a lot, but. The stop loss, they rarely do that, right? Because they're only gonna pay claims. So try to get some level in there, so.
Yes.
As the baby boomers get closer to Fabio Lo, I mean, eggs in the workforce.
Yep.
Things are changing.
That's right.
Yep.
That's right. Okay, so now we'll move on to the uh. Projection itself.
That's gonna be really difficult.
Yeah, it's tough to see, but what um I can explain, and then on the next slide, I'll I'll kind of breaks it down a little bit. Uh but this busy slide will give you uh what our underwriters have done as far as. Projecting what you're going to need to uh apply for working rates or what you're gonna need to take in to cover the whole. Medical expenses, both fixed and variable. Um so what you see here is basically it's broken down by medical and prescription drugs. And then on the far right is the total. You'll see two columns with basically what we're looking at is a rolling twenty four month period. So uh we're gonna look, as I said, twenty four back, twenty four months back from today, we're going to apply. Uh trend on what it's going to take to get you to next uh July. So. We're planning to get you to July twenty twenty four. So. It's it's kind of a little bit of an art form, too. We balance the oldest claims at, uh say, thirty percent credibility and then the. Newest twelve months of claims at seventy percent. Uh so this gets rolled up, we apply trend. And what it comes down to is, we're looking at it, the underwriters are calling for a nine point four percent. Increase to your working rates to cover the entire medical budget. Uh you will see in the yellow. There are some savings that we do not account for that will be coming in. Uh but again, we don't. We don't really apply the, put those in right away. We we use those as kind of like a. Way for you to be creative with your working rates, because there's no guarantees. You know what I mean? We we look back at what. Uh we got for rebates, we look backwards, what we got for savings on the coupon programs and things like that. And, you know, we can, with some predictability, say, you're probably gonna get something similar this year as far as those reimbursement. But we don't want to include in the projection right off the bat. We want to show it after the fact, okay? So if we look at those, it would bring it down to about a six point nine percent. Increase to the working rates. Um the next slide kind of goes over where we come up with this. So you'll see that we're applying a medical trend of seven point one percent. A pharmacy trend of ten percent. And the reason why the pharmacy is much higher is that, you know, drugs are coming to the market so quickly. Specialty drugs are very, very expensive. Um you know, you get somebody on, you know, an embrel, humira. Uh any of those injectables, they're going to be very, very expensive. And that's why the trend for pharmacy is higher than medical. If we blend them together, overall, it's about an eight point one percent trend factor. Uh I already talked.
Even though Congress is trying to get these prescription drug costs.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, uh one of the big ones is like a diabetes type drug that, but they're not gonna be able to. Have any impact on those high cost drugs. And that's so.
They're not generic.
They're not generic. So, you know, you'll see drugs come uh off patent. And there'll be some generics available, so those those will come down. But there's so many new drugs that come to market.
Yeah.
That are going to be, obviously, you know, very effective and hopefully they keep you out of the hospital, but they're expensive. You know, we look at the lists all the time, and we'll get into what we recommend uh for the following year. But uh yeah, that's that's the fastest growing area right now as far as, you know, looking at medical expenses of the drug world.
Uh like I said, I, because I know that they're at a federal level, they're bringing insulin costs down.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
More manageable number, but like you said, this, these old Zepix and Monjaro stuff.
Yeah, I mean, they're miracle drugs, you know, a lot of cancer treatment drugs, the biodegs, they're they're wonderful, and they do a fantastic job. But, you know, they're expensive and the drug manufacturers are gonna, they have to get their R and D. Uh money to to be able to do that kind of stuff. I mean, even the COVID stuff is very expensive.
Oh, that and my, and RNA.
Yes, yes.
Which has got really a lot of good stuff.
Yep. Yeah, they're able to do some phenomenal things. Uh you know, you see. People who were diagnosed with certain conditions, especially in the cancer world, that, you know, it was kind of a death sentence and. You know, they're living for multiple years afterwards. So um it's, you know.
Yeah.
It's pretty remarkable. Uh as I said, the nine point four does not include the pharmacy rebates or the clinical management programs where you get money back. Uh we look at that at about six point nine if you apply those the same. So. This is where it kind of gets, it's funny, Cygnus projecting gross medical plan costs at roughly three hundred thousand dollars less than where we are. Uh now again, they're not, if they're not on the hook to answer to you if their projections come in under budget. Or you you follow me? So. We're you're gonna, we're gonna have to answer to you if we tell you your working rates should be this and they're inadequate, not significant. Now, this comes, it it's funny, because sometimes we'll be on the opposite of it. Sometimes we'll be saying, you know, Cygnus' projection looks high. And and, you know, we're we're really usually pretty good with our underwriters. I mean, this is what we do for a living. So what we're saying is. They're coming in a little bit lower, we're coming in a little bit higher, so it becomes a little bit of a art artwork now, you know what I mean?
Do you guys have a fiduciary with the county?
Uh. Uh we have a fiduciary responsibility to our clients, to you folks, to to, you know, not put you in a, in a. Stressful environment, if you will. That's why we, you know, we don't quote carriers that aren't A rated. Um you know. That's that's some of the Gallagher rules that we have too, so.
One of the things on that real quick on the projection is, you know, it's about two hundred and eighty eight thousand between our projection and Cygnus, right? For us, when you're looking at multi million dollars of, you know, claims coming in, that's a pretty close gap. And what I mean by that is, it really goes back to Gary's talking about, we we add that claims margin in there about two percent. Puff it up because we are being conservative, because Allison was nice enough to let us know about the heart, so on and so forth. And so that really, that makes up the difference. If we were sitting here and that projection came in, it was like a million dollar difference, but like, something's off, right? Yeah. So that's all relative. And I think even as we're driving up this morning from the Cape, the um Gary and I were talking, um. You know, we just, we're definitely hedging on the conservative side, right? Um and again, the the baseline, when when we talked with Allison and Chuck and Julie is. At nine point four, we're using um Chuck's requisition rates as the baseline, right? And then we're looking at the projection above that. So there's some play in there, I understand. And again, this is all in, it's all the fixed cost, medical admin, stop loss. And then the claim's variable. That's the thing. It's an estimate, but it's not a guesstimate, an estimate.
So the underwriters, when they look, when they're given nine point four, you know, as Brian said, they're applying that two percent margin to be conservative, to not put you in a bad spot. One of the things they they do not know and they don't count for is your own financial situation. So. You know, I have manufacturer groups that, you know, have been self-funded for years and, you know, they have uh basically a reserve fund. You know, so let's just say that over the years, you know. Our goal is to be right around a hundred percent loss ratio. That way, we're saying our rates are adequate, but they're not too high, and they're certainly not too low. So some years you're gonna commit at ninety five, so you you know, most organizations will take that uh delta and keep it in a reserve fund. As a padding for a bad year. So maybe one year you come in at a hundred and two or a hundred and three. So it it also depends on. Uh the type of account. So, you know, I've got some colleges that have higher reserve funds. So they can say, okay, well, yeah, the the nine point four, while we we agree is probably justified. We may work, use eight percent because we've got so many dollars in a reserve fund. Uh we need to spend it down. Or they may say, you know, our reserve fund got pretty low over the last few years. Maybe we will go with the nine point four. So that's kind of a decision that we work with you.
Yeah.
To kind of say, okay, where where you're comfortable.
The CPI, North and CPI was six, and you said you had a bottom two, so you're pretty much there.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly. Um one of the other things that we want to talk about uh for the coming year is the pharmacy benefit manager. So. Uh right now, your prescription drugs are bundled with Cigna, so they're they're the pharmacy benefit manager. Uh we're in year three of the three year contracts, and we come up for renewal next year. Uh what we want to look at is those rebates. So we're gonna try and negotiate a better deal for you. So the rebates, you know, year one, we're twenty five percent, which amounted to about eighty one thousand. Year two, they bump up to thirty five percent, which is about a hundred and fifty uh one thousand. And then year three, which is where we're going into, the uh rebates are bumped up to fifty percent. So, you know. We're assuming you'll have at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rebates.
So those manufacturer rebates, I I apologize.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm on like, I'm I'm on a a a medicine that if I didn't have a manufacturer rebate.
Mm hmm.
Or a coupon. It's like four hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
But I paid five dollars a month.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So is that what you're talking about?
It it's part of it. So uh that's the coupon program, the savon coupon program. But there's also money that the uh. Uh drug manufacturers kick back to Cigna.
Okay, into carriers.
To, correct, and to other carriers or pharmacy benefit managers. Um and so and so in the case where. You're bundled, your pharmacy with your administrative services like you are right now with Cigna, Cigna keeps some of those rebates. And.
As an offset.
As an offset to charging the administration fees.
Yeah.
What we're gonna look at next year, what we we want to do with you folks, if you allow us to, is we do a full uh pharmacy benefit manager marketing. So we have a a whole division that's all they do. And what we do for our clients is we go out, we look at, if we're gonna carve out the pharmacy and go with, say, CVS Caremark. Or Elixir or Express Grapes and pull it away from Cigna. Yeah, they're gonna bump up their administrative fees a little bit, but a hundred percent of those rebates would now come to Rockingham. And so it's what we call a pass through.
Yeah.
So you can play with the numbers and and what our uh pharmacy division does is they basically get under the covers on all of us. And what we also have is what we call the, um this is fairly new in the last few years, is Gallagher. Took all of our self-funded clients together and approached folks like CVS Caremark and Express Grapes and all the other major. Pharmacy benefit managers and say, listen, we know what you're making on this stuff. We've got a bulk of clients that we want to come to you as a pool.
Yeah.
So you give a, you give us better terms.
You have much more leverage than.
Correct. So, you know, you could still be with, you know, you could be CVS Caremark. But now you're you're not only Rockingham with CVS Caremark, you're part of Gallagher's Pharmacy Alliance, which could be. You know, hundreds of clients across the country that have CVS Caremark. So you're you're getting a benefit of a group purchasing environment.
Yeah, and that'll be Nick talking about.
Yeah, pharmacy, I've been watching it, and we've discussed it, Brian, um Gary and I, over the past couple of years, our pharmacy costs are going up. Exponentially. So that's something, and we can't control that, because that's done at the physician level with the employee, but this might help us.
Next year, it sounds pretty exciting.
Yeah, and and when we do that also, as I said, they dig under the covers, so they know, you know, what the shelving costs are of drugs, the rebates. All the, they have it all. They get more data than you'll ever get from reports from Cigna. Now, Cigna doesn't like this, obviously, because they're losing, but. Yeah, and and similar to what we're doing with the stop loss right now. So, you know, a lot of uh companies might bundle the stop loss with Cigna as well. Um we pull that apart. So we're we're trying to look at, you know, best in class for every piece of the puzzle. Okay, so that's what we would want to do next year, with your approval.
Real quick on the rebates, it's, the carriers have been squeezed because they've been hanging on to those rebates for so many years. And you know, basically, there's been a shift and a change, kind of a lease more to the clients like yourself, right?
Yeah.
And like a fair share. That's why you see, you know, like, usually, the typical contract is three years, which you have. Twenty five percent sharing in the first year, you know, it's thirty five, we pull up to fifty, right? So. You know, at thirty five percent, a hundred and fifty one, so we're probably looking at potentially two hundred thousand rebate that comes back to you guys as a credit. The other thing too is, keep in mind, Cigna looks at, looking at the discounts that they get from prescription drug companies. Top of the year and then July. So far, it's been about a hundred and twenty five thousand worth of savings that they've negotiated. Again, so you put those together, that's going back to help keep the plant costs down. So on the flip side, like Gary, well, we do. We try to go back and forth. You can pull it out, carve out and and go somewhere else, but. Just know on the back end, Cigna is doing a lot of good things as well with the company, trying to keep the cost down. And it's things that. You know, we talked to Allison and Chuck and Julie to put in place to plant down some of that. It, the bottom line, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Right? And it's a specialty meds for the big conditions. Not much you can do about that.
You know, even if we don't, yeah, even if we don't carve it out, we'll negotiate a better term.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, the only issue I have, I don't mean to sidetrack it, like I don't, for me. The only downside is I can only get thirty day supply. If I ask for a three month supply, the number is bigger.
Yeah.
But because I get a thirty day supply, it's five boxes.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of nuances.
Just trying to think that they just don't want you to resell it or something.
Well, I mean, they're they're tricky. It's a little bit of a shell game at times with with the PBMs, you know, uh and and drug manufacturers. So. You'll you'll see a drug coming off patent, and what they'll do is they'll. Come up with a new drug that might be a uh combination drug, so you could take one pill instead of two pills, but the price goes up like three times.
Yeah, yeah.
You you know what I mean? So and that's a new patent, you know what I mean?
Right.
Uh so things like that, that that they do, and and that's why it helps to have people looking at this.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. Uh so the next slide is basically a uh updated claim experience for you. So you can see you're running right at around a hundred percent right now. Um had a couple of bad months, uh let's see, November, December. At a hundred and twenty five percent and a hundred and forty one percent loss ratios, but overall. This is all of your plans rolled up into the total uh medical budget, and so it's running at a hundred percent. Um when we look at breaking the plans down underneath, you'll see the notes. Um. Um, you know, the, uh, OAP ten percent is running right around a hundred. High deductible ten percent plan is at one-ten right now, and the high deductible twenty percent is at forty-eight, okay? Just a note, last year ended at a hundred and seven percent loss ratio, so you had a bad year last year.
Oh, we're, we're tracking, we're tracking a little bit though.
Yes, yes.
And that, that HD, HP, the high, the twenty is usually typically younger generation picking on?
Yeah, usually the, the, the folks that know that they're probably not going to incur many healthcare costs.
Yeah, so I would think that eventually over time that they, as the baby boomers retire.
Yeah.
You may see a different number.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, like I said, you, you've gone through a little spike here, um, and it seems to be kind of correcting, but we, we might have another year or so of, of that correction, yeah, okay? So that's kind of where you're running right now. Um, this is a snapshot of the high dollar claims that you, uh, see and we, uh, we have them broken down not only by the plan, but status, so terminated, retired, active, that type of thing. The relationship whether employees, spouses or dependents.
This is the next slide.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. There you go.
Terminated is off the plan.
Right.
Whether it passed or not, we don't know, it's just that they're off from that opinion.
Yeah. So you can see that, uh, on the far right, you've got three claims right now that have gone over a hundred and fifty thousand dollar in, uh, spec level. So you've been reimbursed three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, almost three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Um, and then you've got the ones that are approaching that a hundred and fifty thousand. So as I said, we, you know, when we're looking at the numbers and uh, Kate, you said it was four, well, right now you got over three right now and you've got fast approaching, you know, four and five.
Yeah.
So it kind of basically, um, verifies our argument that you should stay at one-fifty for this coming year.
And a snapshot, chunk of these folks are active, right? We're in some mixed bag, right? Right down the middle between the employee and then the spouse. So meaning it's going to probably be around, and they're not going in here.
So we're going to move, unless there's any questions, we'll move on to dental. And this is a, obviously a much more simple story.
Yeah.
Uh, so again, your fixed cost, the, uh, administration of your plan with Northeast Delta Dental is, uh, at zero percent, so there's no rate increase. You have a rate guarantee that's going to expire six-thirty, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, so really no changes there at all, um, which is great. We move to the next slide and our underwriters, as well as, uh, New England, uh, Northeast Delta Dental have done projections for us. And we're coming in at a negative two-point-two percent rate adjustment. No, we would never, never really recommend going backwards in rates because it's just going to make the next adjustment more drastic. So, you know, our recommendation would to leave, believe the rates where they are, they're adequate. If you really wanted to be conservative, maybe bump them up one or two percent. Uh, whereas you can see on the right-hand column, far right bottom, uh, their, uh, Delta Dental's projection is saying that it calls for a four-point-three percent increase, so.
And you split this. I'm going to ask you a question on the dental piece. Um, are you finding a lot of these, uh, dentists, um, opting out of these plans? Because it's happened to me and, and basically, you know, no one likes to change. I like dentists a lot. And it's like, we're not dealing with, you have to deal with yourself. What I found out was I get half the benefits.
Yeah.
And I don't get the full benefit of what I'm paying in for. So you find that?
We, we do. In fact, my dentist does the same thing. So every time I go, I get a bill after, after the insurance covers some of it, I always get a bill.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I don't want to change my dentist either, you know, probably a little expensive, but, you know, I have a history with him and, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, so yes, we are seeing that a lot.
So Delta Dental in general, they went through a recent, um, contract negotiation, we only provided what they're going to pay. It came down a little bit. And that's what kind of, all of a sudden, that might be your dentist, oh, forget it, I'm just going to not be in the network. Yeah, you know, and unfortunately, what's happened is it ends up packing to one of the top dogs, you know, like yourself or at another company. That's, I swear, it's the president of every company, like my dentist is out and, you know, the dentist makes the decision, but again, Delta Dental, they're still reimbursing a good amount, but they're bringing their reimbursement levels down a little bit. Yeah, so I think, like my, my, I know my dentist is not from the cheapest, you know, uh, and he's really good and I really like him a lot. Um, what I found out was is, uh, and, and my plan is with my wife.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway, so typically I'm supposed to get fifteen hundred dollars worth of work.
Yep.
Through the plan. Now, by him not entering into that plan, uh, I can only, if I continue to use him, now my benefits are seven fifty, it's half.
Yeah.
And the only way I can get around that is to go to a different dentist that I want that fifteen hundred. And it's like, you know, people are comfortable with, so I, and I don't know, and, and he's just telling me, listen, I don't want to deal with, they're telling me how to do my practice and I don't want to deal with it.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah. No, I, I go to the same thing. Uh, it's, it's more and more common.
Yeah.
You're actually, we're starting to see it on the medical provider side too.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's, you know, some of the specialists, uh, especially this really more mental health area for sure. They may not take any insurance or, you know, they're going to contract with very few. And you, again, you're going to get a balanced bill. Um, yeah, that's probably the most difficult area right now, mental health providers being contracted by the carrier. There's just, there's such a demand for them right now. Um, you know, you, you can't even get in, see him face to face anymore. A lot of it's virtual, uh, which, you know.
Yeah, well, anyway, I, I didn't mean to sidetrack.
No, you're right, you're right.
The stuff we, the track, we, we listen for.
So anticipation of like the dental over the last two years, Chuck and I have talked and we've increased, uh, the high deductible plan, um, a percentage and stuff. So I think that's why we're good at where we are with the dental, because we took care of that like two years ago. The last two years we increased that.
Yeah, the dental's a little bit more easy to predict.
Exactly.
We do okay on time or?
We've got a, we've got a start-up by the process.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll, I'll be very quick, I'll be very quick on these last couple. So the next one is your dental experience. Uh, right now, as we said, you're running at ninety-five percent, which is great. The previous year you ran at seventy-nine percent, so it's, you're still fine there. Uh, we have the breakdown by the high plan, the low plan. So, you know, as I said, you, you can leave it at zero, you can throw one or two percent if you really wanted to, but your rates are adequate, okay? Uh, I'm going to turn this over to Brian now. So this is the twenty-twenty-three plan design consideration, so these are things that you may consider. Uh, everything we've talked about thus far has been in apples to apples, so no plan assigned changes.
Okay. I mean, really honest, this comes from Allison and, and Chuck and Julie kind of, you know, what they were hoping to accomplish and then we look into repricing. So I think overall, all the, all the plans they're looking to change. Right now it's first of the month following thirty days, they wanted to shorten that up a little bit to first of the month following the data hire. So any minute it comes in, and this wouldn't be any rate impact or, or claim impact, um, you know, nothing that's, you know, tangible. So I think this is a no-brainer. They're just trying to make it a little richer, right, when you look at the benchmarks? Um, just so you know, if I lose my voice, the stuff on the left is the detail, the cool graphics on the right is benchmark. So we kind of look at, it's a good idea, but what is benchmark, what's comparison, what's going on? And so you'd be right in, you know, a lot of groups now you can see in the light, no waiting period, some have one month. So that's kind of where you're at and that's, that's, that's a good thing.
Obviously this would help you in attracting hiring personnel.
And so what do we need to do to give you guys, or like, do we want to make decisions as we go along?
Um, we have motions coming in next week.
So, okay, all the motions will come in next week.
The only thing we wanted to leave today was the stop loss.
Um, the next slide here is, uh, as far as increasing the life benefit, this is the group policy right now. Someone who passes away is a benefit of flat twenty K, right? And that's the idea there is hopefully to, uh, cover any funeral costs and some stuff that surrounds that. So we went, went back to, um, New York Life, we're trying to, you know, what if we, what if we increased it, say to twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred? So the nice thing is, it is a no-brainer on making a decision to go to twenty-five K for a benefit because the rate they are willing to hold. We're going to talk to them. Um, a lot of groups, you can see on the graphs to the right, will do one-time sale. Right, and that can sort of premium to go way up, right? And so what, when you were looking at this, you kind of want to say it's a progression, right? It's one of those hidden benefits, but when it happens, it is vital to have some money available to pay that funeral and stuff in the, in the front end. So, um, I think you'll notice the estimated annual premium is about, you know, seventeen K. You jump to fifty, it's thirty-four K, you go up, it's probably going to, it's up to you. But, you know, even if you jump to fifty, it's just going to be budget-wise, you know, it's up to about thirty-five K. So at a minimum, you should take that twenty-five K and say yes. Um, and then, and then it's a win-win from HR and then you go.
Are those the only increments you can choose?
Well, go from twenty-five to fifty. Yeah, if you look at the green boxes, you can go to fifty, go to seventy-five, a hundred. If you went to a hundred K, you know, the estimated annual premium is about seventy-two thousand. Right now it's seventeen and, one of the things you look at, yeah, we look at too is but more importantly, you look at is the salaries of your employees, right? Um, it depends what you do with business, obviously we know, but, um, I think, you know, maybe next year we can look at maybe increasing it potentially again, but I, you know, I think twenty-five is probably a spot.
Well, it's a no cost, yeah.
Yeah, sort of over in it.
Yeah.
I was, my concern, my, my question was like, there are thirty. And what would that be? That, that's the, oh, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, usually.
Twenty-five, fifty.
Usually.
We, we could check, but usually they, they throw it in, uh, increments of.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my question. Sorry. And then again, real quick on the benchmarking, you kind of move up into that next area, someone that's paying attention, it's a little bit more obviously a richer benefit, right? Next slide, I know you have only five minutes, right? So one of the things that we're looking at, um, is for short-term disability. You do have a lot of utilization. I'm sorry, this is, yeah, perfect, great. Then go to the next slide. Right now there's a fourteen-day elimination period before benefits kick in. Right? Um, so you're going to go two weeks and maybe that can be filled in with PTO or something like that, but um, when we looked at the benchmarking, you're, you're right in there, the majority of the group. The richest of the group backed it down to seven days. So after a week, benefits kick in. And I think Allison brought this, you know, up as a, an idea because there's, you do have a lot of folks that go out on STD. And then the thing is, when do you start collecting some type of benefit? So you can see right now, the estimated annual premium is about a hundred and twelve K. Um, if you went up, backed it down to seven days, which is creating richer benefits, only about a hundred and twenty-seven K. Um, so a smaller difference there to get you right, really in the, in line with the richest elimination period for short-term disability. I, I think the genesis of this is somebody goes out there sick, they're obviously dealing with something or surgery. And you know, I'm, I'm unfortunately having to go through it twice. They look at it, how quick can I start recouping some of my paycheck? Basically, if you're self-employed, you know, mowing lawns, you don't have this coverage. But if you're working in the professional field, folks know about it and they're looking to get, you know, when you're not working, but if you can collect some of your paycheck, it's a gig.
Yeah.
So I think this would be a, like a, comes up too.
We have the New Hampshire, you know, insurance, um, what is it truly, the New Hampshire paid family medical insurance thing? And so we're trying to kind of come between that. So we're not offering it. What we're allowing for is, we have to by, you know, New Hampshire state statute, we have to um, have a pay code for it, but it would kind of set us apart so that our employees know we have that, so they don't have to go out to market um, and buy insurance for that, because while they buy insurance for that, they have the opportunity to still come on plan and have some other stuff with that. So we were just trying to kind of find a happy medium. We also asked to have the weekly rate go up, but on, um, it's too cost prohibitive, uh, like a thousand, twelve hundred and fifty and fifteen hundred. I feel it's too cost prohibitive, that amount, uh, that weekly amount, uh, to go up because it goes from like a seven fifty for the seven day. If you went to a thousand, it's a hundred and forty-one thousand. So, you know, there's got to be some balance of it. So I, I'd like to consider the seven fifty um, at the seven day so that we, you know, we have some more classifications of, uh, pay grades here, where we have some people that are in these positions and they're going fourteen days. And they actually can even go longer than that because if the medical information does not come in by, to the carrier that substantiates or is in question, it takes even longer, they will not pay the claim. So it just pushes it out even farther and farther for some of our employees that are out there trying to get an income. Uh, so that is one consideration I'd like to avoid. Sixty-six and two-thirds percent it is. So, thank you.
My LTD?
LTD, yeah, I was there. Yeah. The long-term, I'm just, um, uh, you know, there was a proposal out there that Gary and Brian ran. I was more interested in the short-term disability. We have optional life, uh, excuse me, optional long-term disability. Some employers don't offer short-term disability, it's voluntary, but they pay for the long-term disability. Because there's more of a threshold for them to get to a long-term disability claim than there is on the short-term disability. But we're the opposite. We pay a hundred percent for the short-term and for those that are part-time, it's a prorated amount. But I'm not, I wasn't, it wasn't my recommendation or Julie's or even Chuck's at this point to look at a long-term care, like fully paid option. Um, so.
Yeah, just underneath you see, you know, seventy-two percent of companies offer company-paid LTD. So we're just, you know, all these things go around to your ability to attract and retain help.
Right.
You know, so we're just giving you data to base your decisions on that, you know. Would you, would somebody not come here because the life insurance benefit is twenty versus twenty-five? Probably not. But other things like disability insurance, those are things they do consider. Of course, salary is most important. But, but these are things that we want to bring up to you to, you know, allow you to look at your overall benefit designs.
What is age bandit rate, age bandit rate?
Yeah, so. Right, so generally when you're looking at anything that's voluntary, you're basically being individually underwritten. So those are age bandit. If you're looking at a group program, now you don't have that, you know, you get a composite rate. So you can see that down below under the current program, it's, the estimated premium is, uh, almost seventy-two thousand dollars. Of course, it's paid by the employee. If we're to be on a group chassis, if you will, that premium would be sixty-two thousand dollars.
Because the, the younger people are subsidizing the older.
Correct.
Well, I mean, it's true.
I don't mean to.
Well, we did it earlier.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's basically a balance of, you know, what's more needed, short-term disability or long-term disability? You can make the argument both ways. You say, okay, well, I'm out on short-term disability, I might be able to pay my bills for, you know, a short period of time. If I'm out on long-term disability and I don't have long-term disability coverage, I'm in trouble. So it's just a, you know, a philosophy.
But the good thing that you do, you know, there are, there are obviously people enrolled in voluntary LTD.
Right.
I think we sit here, we can look at some, you have no LTD offering at all. And that's, that's the gist of it. If you were to, you're an employer program with everybody enrolled, it's about sixty-three K and that's all straight on, you know, Rocky and County. So it's something to think about, right, as we look ahead, yeah, so.
Chuck, this is another reason why we do short-term disability as employer-paid plan is that that way there's not discontinuance of service would there is, really the charging system.
Oh, yeah.
So we do that internal processing here. That's why we don't have a separate company do, we take care of it. So there's, we have to do extra forms to, to file whatever, the charging system, but it allows people not to have a break in service.
Interesting. So in long-term disability, just so you know, since I've been here coming up on eight, I think we've had a total of two definite, maybe a third, but two for the eight years that I've been here versus short-term disability.
Yeah, so we should focus our attention on that.
All right, guys, I, we're getting ready for the next video. Look, if there's anything you guys want to wind up with, any saying, any party?
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for the decision that helps us.
Coming all the way up.
Oh, no problem at all, no problem at all.
Guys deal with other counties in New Hampshire or?
Uh, so I have a diocese of, of Manchester, not too far away.
Yeah.
Um, I know we do have some, uh, I don't have any other municipalities in this area. Our company might, uh, but me personally. We have, we have a big municipality practice, uh, which is something I didn't bring up, but I'll bring up next year is a possible stop-loss captive that's made up of just municipalities.
Oh. Is that like?
Self-insured pool.
But that's probably an older population, right?
Yes and no, you know. I like to be as creative as possible. If it keeps your rates down.
Oh, listen, I agree. But I question whether, I mean.
I know, right? Great seeing everybody. Okay, take care.
So I used to do LTD.
Do you want to turn to the second region?
Allison, Julie.
Shall I move you to a third?
Very informative.
Wow.
So, I hit, when I hit forty.
Take care.